Good evening and welcome to Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, July 11, 2022. Called a meeting to order at seven o'clock. We please stand and join me pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome, welcome. At least you call roll, please.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Councilmember Grau?
Here.
Mayor Winchell?
Here. Councilmember Wong is not able to join us tonight, as is our city administrator, Matt Potarowski. So, but we are still here strong and ready to move forward. So with that, we'll move to item four, which is adopting the agenda corrections or additions to the agenda. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Hatfield?
Second.
Second by councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Next, we move on to visitor presentation. And tonight, we have Ms. Libby Fairchild with Friends of the Library. Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here for the Friends of the Library, but I'm going to be back in a couple of weeks for the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Golf Tournament. I seem to be up here frequently, but it's about this time of the year when I start coming around. I'm here to represent the Friends of the Chaska Library and our annual book sale, which of course was suspended one year during the pandemic, happens on the plaza outside of City Hall in the library. It's our largest fundraiser. This year, we have, due to unforeseen circumstances, we're short on volunteers. Of course, one of the reasons we're short is because our wonderful volunteer coordinator, who always seemed to get a lot of people to come and volunteer, was Barbara Kohlhepp, who died last year. She was a staunch supporter of books and the library, actually served as a president of the Friends and kind of shamed a few of us into joining. And so here I am 15 years later and still with the Friends. It's a huge sale, happens outside, and it runs Thursday through Sunday, July 28 through the 31st. If you want to volunteer, your best bet is to probably head to the library and sign up for a shift. I've already contacted the council and the mayor and have asked them to work a shift. I'm going to get a bunch of other people I'm going to contact. I'm kind of on a, let's get out the volunteers kick. So if there are any questions, you can stop by the library. You know, our library's not open on Sundays, and it's only open until three on Saturday. I think it's open until eight, Monday through Thursday, and then until five on Friday. Stop by, sign up. We'd love to have you join us. If you volunteer, you get a free book of your choice. So we hope to get enough volunteers to fill our slots. One thing I know you're probably going to ask me is where does the money go? It goes to the Lucky Day Book Sale or Book Program, which is we'll buy some kind of high-demand books that you can check out, but you can only have them for two weeks. And you can't reserve them. So you come in, it's your lucky day if it's there. We fund the summer reading program, the Hooked on Books program. We sometimes buy enhancements to the library. And particularly as we're moving forward with a new library, having those funds is going to be pretty important. I don't know if everybody knows how that works, but the county provides the building and, no.
No.
The city provides the building.
Yep.
And the county provides the stuff inside, the books, the tables, the chairs, and all that sort of stuff. So we are hoping to raise enough funds to build some, purchase some other enhancements. We also use the funds for things that pop up like, oh, we got a program coming up. This is a neat opportunity. We're going to get an author in. We need some money, and we generally say yes. So if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd say head to the library and sign up if you're so inclined.
If it rains, what happens?
We cover the books in plastic, and it stays out there. We've been pretty lucky. We did have a storm a couple of years ago that damaged some of the books, but they're all used books. And so, you know, if we have to not sell some of them, that's okay, too. But yeah, they get covered in plastic every night. And of course, with the police department right there, I think things are pretty safe. We also have DVDs, CDs. I think the mayor bought a bunch of them one time, a couple of years ago, bought a lot of CDs. I think he did. Pretty certain you did. And we actually-
Anything could happen.
And we actually have some vinyl, too. So if you've got a turntable and you're interested in some music, head on over. Very reasonably priced hardcover books are a dollar. Soft covers are 50 cents. The soft covers are 50 cents. The kids' books are, we kind of be generous with them, but they're normally 50 cents. If it's a skinny book, sometimes somebody will just throw it in. So we try to be generous with the kids, so.
All right, well, we will, this is being viewed by thousands of people.
I know. Hi, everyone.
Millions. So hopefully, we can get some people interested. This is like Libby talked about, that this is their main fundraiser and a big deal for the library. So if anyone has the ability to help out, and the shift, I'm just going to real quickly, the shifts are what?
Well, they kind of vary on the days. Thursday, we go-
Roughly, roughly three hours.
Yeah.
Two and a half to three hours.
Right.
So there are a bunch, but stop down at the library, and that's where the signups are. And this isn't about one, you need multiple people at this.
Yeah, we could use 20 or 30 people, perhaps.
You need like four or five people, probably per time.
We think five per shift would be ideal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
We will have some water and light refreshments for the workers, so there'll be bottled water with ice for the workers. So you don't have to worry about it being too hot. You can go in the library, cool off, and get something to drink.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Libby.
Thanks, Libby.
All right, next, is there anybody else for visitor presentation? Will we hear anybody online? Kevin?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank, all right, thank you. All right, we will move on to approval of previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I would annotate a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Hubbard?
Second.
Second by councilmember Hatfield, approving the June 20, 2022 city council meeting minutes. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Next, we move to consent. Items in these, again, are items that need our approval, but not necessarily a conversation. But any and all may be pulled at any point in time and have a discussion. So with that, is there anything that anyone has a comment on consent? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent.
Motion by councilmember Hatfield?
Second.
Second by councilmember Grau. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Whose is next to action items? Eight A is a public improvement hearing for Creek Road trunk sewer project.
Um, may I ring councilmembers? I'll start with this one. As you know, the city's been working toward the process to extend the trunk sewer line along Creek Road up to southwest Chaska to support the future development there. Basically, the project's been divided into two phases. The first phase, which would be done this year, occurs where that new development, where some of Apodin's new buildings are going on up there. Phase two would occur in 2023, really kind of bringing it down the hill here closer to downtown. The total cost for both the phases is about $19 million. As you saw in your report, there's several local funding sources, which we've identified. So the Tiff District that we have up there has pledged some of the increment there to go to funding the extension of the trunk line sewer, as well as area trunk fees and connection charges on the new development municipal state aid funds. And there were state bridge funds for the replacement of the bridge and new box culvert as well. Additionally, staff has been working to obtain other state and federal funding. There was a nearly $500,000 D grant, which was secured recently, which will go to this particular project, as well as earlier this year, we found out we received $2 million in congressionally directed spending funds. We do have requests out with the US EDA for $3.75 million, as well as another $2 million congressionally directed spending funding request. So those are some of the state and federal funds that we're also looking at to help fund this project. In addition, like what was done before with the Creek Road trunk sewer there, we did assess residential properties, and that would be proposed again for this particular project. For the phase one portion, there's four residential properties that are affected by it, and estimating that that benefit would be $7,500 per lot. So this evening, an assessment hearing is not required for those assessments, but the request tonight is to gather input and feedback on and concerns related to the extension of this particular trunk line sewer along Creek Road. It's anticipated at next week's council meeting that there will be bids ready for the council to look at, and then staff will also bring back a recommendation about whether to order the improvements if the bids are acceptable. So I'm happy to take any questions. Matt Clark is here as well if there are particular questions about the project itself.
Questions?
I'm kind of hiding back over here, guys. I'm not feeling very well, so I figured I'd just get Noel sick and not you, so.
Hard to see you over there.
Two questions. Have the residents, have they been given the estimated assessment yet or no? Yeah?
Part of the process is for us to, one, as a part of this hearing, is to notify them that they are proposed to be assessed.
Okay.
The next step for us, it's a little unorthodox. We're, I would say, we're a little bit out of the traditional that the council's used to, where we actually hold an assessment hearing before we actually have the improvement hearing, and we have an assessment hearing before we award a project. The assessments on this project are, for lack of better words, extremely minor.
Yeah.
And so we're, you know, part of it is understanding what's the right timing to go through that process, because assessments really start to gain interest from the time of which we levy them. And knowingly that this project is going to have, there's portions of the work that will happen this year, and then there will be portions that will happen next year. I would say the, you know, really, if you look at the project as a whole this year, there's only so much we can get done. And it won't, the project in and of itself won't be substantially complete until probably the middle of the summer next year, about the same time what we'll be rolling into that next phase of phase two. So trying to tee up the timing of when is that appropriate time to have that assessment hearing, it would either be right now, we're planning for, planning for later this fall, or at the latest, next spring.
Okay.
So these residents, as we go by them, they will get hooked to this, or they'll have the option to hook to?
They'll have the option, yeah. The sewer would be available, obviously. One of the things that Matt and I have talked about and we're going to share with council is the $7,500 is historically what's been used in downtown for years and years and years. One of the things as a benefit that we were going to propose to the property owners is that if they were to connect, that there would be a reduction in that assessment amount. Portions of that $7,500 is really intended for recapturing some of those trunk costs and some of the area fees. And so if folks were to elect to hook up, potentially allowing the, or having a credit of $2,500 for those folks, reducing the assessment down to about $5,000, reducing it down to $5,000. And that would really, the intent is to incentivize it, so that we're not having to deal with tanks and those types of things, septic tanks, you know, folks who have wells, if they have a well that may be failing or needs to get dealt with. It really kind of follows more closely to where our policy is, where when utilities are available, that we want to incentivize people to connect to it.
There's no water going in that trench, is there?
Yeah. Yep.
Oh, we are running water through there.
Yep, so there's a trunk water main component that's going to happen essentially down to, well, the trunk water main piece is essentially in between the two roundabouts, but we are having water that would be available to those property owners.
Oh, but that's not going all the way to BFW?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, I get it. So it's being able to serve those houses in that general.
It's the, you know, it's that quasi, what happens with the remaining properties are there? Are they incorporated with development? Is there opportunities for us to bring water main, tying it in?
When they're so far off the road like that, do we just go so far in and then, is their responsibility, or do we go all the way in?
So what we would do is provide a service up to where the right of way is, so staying consistent with what we've done in the past. And then they would take it from their property line all the way in. They'd work with plumbers and those types of folks, you know, and those type, no different than any other property owner would.
Yeah. And that, that, one that's got the bridge over there, we just go down deep and then they got to come under it?
Yep, so we would set them up so essentially they would work with a contractor to go underneath the creek and come back up. There's opportunities that we were going to reach out to them, as well as is it an opportunity for us to partner on something with them? And, you know, do we incorporate something with the project with assessment amount that would allow them more availability, because they have expressed the interest to hook up?
Okay.
Yeah.
You had two questions, and I butted in. Remember which other one was?
No.
Okay. So this, the Creek Road's not going to open anymore, correct?
Creek Road is closed.
At, at what point now do we take down all the temporary detour signs and just eliminate that as the roads close? It's not, it's giving, there's too much, what do I want to say? Think, too many people think it's going to reopen.
Yeah.
It is not going to open again.
It is something we need to talk to Carver County about. Part of it involves us removing signs along the county highway. And so them not recognizing that Creek Road is closed, it's kind of been a work in progress with them. But that's something that we were going to do this summer.
I mean, do, because, do we put something then just on the Creek Road, you know, in and about the BFW or somewhere that they can turn around and just say, road closed, or? And then just eventually take all that down? But I mean, just all that temporary signage and all the detour, well, that's over. I mean, it's really not a detour anymore. It's permanent.
Right.
And I just wonder how we go about that, but it just.
Really, once we get the roundabout up at Chaska Creek Boulevard, it'll allow those folks to have that U-turn. So finishing off the project that we had started last fall, to me, that's the mechanism that allows people to actually make those full movements. I mean, right now, Creek Road is, you know, it's, it's closed, but folks really don't know where it's closed at. But once we finish off the, you know, the Chaska Creek Boulevard, the connection between Angler down to Creek Road, have the, the full turnaround and everything in, that's when we pull the signs.
But are we going to finish that road off to make that, so that'll go up into the harvest then?
Yep. Well.
Is that part of the project, or is that separate?
Yeah, so the, I mean, I'll just share my screen here quick. The, so this year's project, again, not to delve into details here, but-
Right.
The yellow is the focus of what the city would be awarding a contract for. The, in addition to what's in yellow, is setting it up such that we would have the new twin box culverts that would go in for allowing for that future road extension for Savannah. Right now, Savannah Way, or the finishing off of Savannah Way would happen as early as, we're planning for as early as next year. The problem being is there's some pretty poor soils that cross over the creek there. And so we need some time to basically allow that stuff to settle out and to monitor it, so that when we're ready to finish off the road, that there's really no concerns, and we just move ahead and make the connection.
Do we have surcharge piles on there?
We will, this summer.
There is some?
There will be.
Oh.
Yep, there will be.
Okay. So, so we're going between two hash marks?
Yep, we are right in between the two hash marks. Yep. It's about a half mile in, in total. You know, the intent with this year is to really finish, you know, I would say finish, finish, everything from where the hash mark is just to under Highway 212. So really getting that piece of it fully built, done, reconstructed. And then the emphasis being kind of picking up, you know, hopefully, cross our fingers and say that the weather holds out, but mother nature's going to dictate. But then next summer, really coming in and finishing off the balance of the project.
So then we just bid that way earlier?
That's the way it's being bid. Yep. We're opening bids on Tuesday next week.
Well, that, that roundabout that's already there, then all that gets paved?
It will next summer.
Not this year?
The one to the west or where-
Yeah, that one.
Where my cursor is, that will get finished this year.
Yeah, because I was going to say that commercial building should be open by then.
Yep. Yep, that will get finished this year. I would say the one, you know, the one change that we've heard is that with Apodin kind of not pursuing their third building yet this year, that, you know, that allows a little bit of flexibility in the timing. So, you know, take that with a grain of salt, but, yep.
Yes.
Did we know they're not doing their third building?
Well, it, it just happened.
Okay, I was like, did I miss that?
Is it the one that's closest to 10, or is it?
It would be the-
The one that's across 10 would butt up to that once.
Yeah, because I thought they were starting.
So the project that they had came forward with this fall was the project south of Creek Road. So that is the building that they've basically told us that with where we're at today and today's world of economy, that it's just, there's too much influx. They have started the, the project that's just south of Angler.
Okay.
So the building that there, that is 100% a go. It's just really understanding the market and the timing on, you know, when to come forward with that third building, which is planned south of Creek Road.
I think by the time they finish that first one and get the second one done, you know, who knows, that could change.
Right.
But I mean, they, you know, you, I don't know if you remember hearing that gentleman Jay from Apodin, I mean, they got to order everything six to nine months early.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they can get it, so. There is a little planning involved in that, so. I'm sure it's just to wait and see what happens a little bit.
Yeah, the big thing is the commercial industry change with everything else that's happened has just impacted them, especially the commercial industry.
All right, well, it's good that that, I mean, I, I think we do need to pave that and get that in place for, for usage when that opens up this fall, so. Or whatever that is, I don't know. When is a scheduled opening?
Well, we plan to finish, I mean, like I said, we will finish the roundabout where my finger's at. I mean, Chaska Creek Boulevard will get done this year. So, I mean, removing the signs and kind of having, you know, the loop, if you will, between, you know, the, what's currently the access off of Angler and Creek Road, and then the signal where this new Chaska Creek Boulevard connects to, you'll, all of that will be open. It's really the balance of coming into downtown, it'll be closed for fruition.
Okay.
I had a question now come up because of that. So tax increment financing with, with them not doing all of it, does that affect the money pledged to support these trunk utilities going in? No?
No, we set the, when, at least can elaborate a little bit, too, but when we did the-
Well, no, I just-
Tax increment financing for-
It's in the RFA.
Yeah, when we did the tax increment financing for the setting it up, the Tiff District, for the existing two commercial buildings.
Okay.
That was being pledged towards these improvements.
Sure, so the third building just wasn't even factored into it?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, I just was like, oh.
And the third building is part of that, going to be part of the existing, the Tiff District with phases one and two in it, so.
Okay.
I don't have that.
Uh, it's, uh, it's in this request rack.
I don't have that anymore. Oh, mine locked up. I know I'm locked up now. I can't do nothing. All right, doesn't matter. All right, anything else? Anybody else have any questions? So do I, do I need to do anything tonight, or?
Nope, you just need to open the hearing and close the improvement hearing. The action item that would happen, you know, traditionally is that you would open the improvement hearing, close the improvement hearing, and then we would have, you would actually order the improvements. We're not asking to order, or I'm not asking to order the improvements this evening. We're going to wait till the bids come in and make sure that everything's ready to go. So there is no real formal action. It's just holding the public improvement hearing. Once you have an improvement hearing, we have a certain period of time to when we actually have to order the improvements and move forward with the project, so.
So you want me to open up a improvement hearing, but leave it open?
You can close the improvement hearing.
Oh, so just because there's no one here?
You just open and close it? Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I thought it was one of them that we have to leave it.
Not a continuation where I messed up the mailing or something like that. No, not this time. This is just general feedback.
All right, is there anyone else that has any questions? If not, I will open the public improvement hearing at 7:26. And is there anyone here that wants to speak on the public hearing on the Creek Road trunk sewer project? Kevin, anybody online?
No, no one online.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move to 7:27. We'll close the public hearing. And do we need to make, still make a, approve it or not? Are you good?
Nope, we're good.
Okay. All righty, we'll move to 8B then, our 2021 annual financial reports.
I will turn this over to Noel.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. We are coming before you tonight to present the financial reports and the results of the operations for fiscal year 2021. With us tonight is Jackie Heidel with MMKR. They are the audit firm that the city engages to review the financial statements and the operations and compliance with any state compliance checklist that have to be completed as a part of that audit. Tonight, we're going to be reviewing three reports that you've received in the packet for the city. One is the annual comprehensive financial report. The other two is the special purpose report, which are some additional reports issued by the auditors, and then the management report, which includes some discussions on the funds that are contained within the financial report. There'll also be a second set of reports for the Chaska Fire Relief Association, their annual financial report, their special purpose report, as well as the management letter that's issued by the auditor. These reports are required to be completed each year by state statute. And as a part of the audit process, the city staff prepares the financial statements. The financial statements are the statements of the city. They are not prepared by the auditor. They're prepared by the city. And then the auditors review those statements, as well as our transactional activity for the year. So the audit is conducted each year, and we're going to review the 2021 fiscal year tonight. As we get started, though, I wanted to give you just a little bit of overview and scope of what the fiscal year 2021 came to in total. So if we looked in the report and looked at our total expenditures for the entire city as an entity wide, you'd find out that we spent about $24.8 million in total expenditures for the year. That's everything across all of our governmental funds, as well as our enterprise-type fund activity for utilities and recreation-type for-profit funds. That's the base for some percentages that we're going to calculate here. The second number is our enterprise funds come to about $61.6 million. That's about 65% of our operations are just in those utility- That's about 65% of our operations are just in those utility and community center, curling arena, golf course type proprietary operations. So, that's the majority of the financial activity for the year. The largest fund in the city is our electric fund, that's 44.1%, about $41.8 million in total expenditures. That includes our purchase power that we have to purchase to resell to our customers. Our general fund is the general governmental fund that provides our general governmental services, including public safety, such as police and fire, our building inspections, our park and rec activity, as well as our general administration and code enforcement. The general fund came to $19.6 million, which is just about one-fifth of our operations, 20.7%. Our general fund is of course supported by our tax levy. Our total tax levy last year in the general fund was 7.7 million, that's about 8%. So, our tax levy is a significant portion of our operations, but it's less than 10%. So, when we go through the financial report and then, if we look at budgets, as we look at our '22 and '23 budget, do keep in mind, there's a significant number of operations over and above what's occurring in our general fund that are part of our financial activities each year. Now, the primary report that you received is the annual comprehensive financial report. It's the largest of the three reports for the city. This is a report that the city has prepared, and we do a comprehensive report because there's additional disclosures that we make in here to make sure that we're in compliance with various governmental accounting standards, as well as standards that are required by the Government Finance Officers Association as a part of their certificate program. In this report, there's really three primary sections. The introductory section, which is really pages one through 10, is for a first-time reader or someone who's trying to get familiar with the city. This includes a letter transmittal that explains what the city is, what its operations are, and some of the overviews of what the city reports in the financial report. There's also an organizational chart, as well as a listing of elected and appointed city officials as a part of that section. The primary section of the report, the second section is the financial section. This begins on page 11. You'll find on page 11 the report from the auditor. This is the report, their report that is included in our financial statement for 2021. This is what we refer to as an unmodified or clean opinion. I'm going to have Jackie explain the purpose of the opinion and what they, how they come to that opinion, but consistent with prior years, this is a clean opinion, and it basically is stating that the representations we have made in here for our financial positions as of the end of the year and the activity for the fiscal year closed is, is fair and a fair representation of our financial activities and positions. In this section, there's also a management and discussion report. This is prepared by city staff, it begins on page 15. This is where we go through and we start discussing the individual funds, our general fund, our special revenue funds, our debt funds for the repayment of our debt, our capital project funds for our construction activity, our TIF activity, our abatement activity, as well as our enterprise funds and some trust type fund activity that we have to account for. In addition to the management discussion, you then get into really two sections of the report, there's our major funds and our non-major funds. Our major funds are the ones that, under financial reporting standards, rise to a certain threshold and are reported on an individual basis. Our two largest major funds are our general fund for our governmental activities and then, our electric fund. So, just to highlight in our general fund, in our, in 2021, the net fund balance increased at the general fund by $1.1 million. This was the result of a couple efforts that the council has been pursuing. One was in 2021, we increased our capital improvement program levy by $300,000 to offset some lost revenues due to COVID, and so, we have continued to fully fund that CIP program in '21, as well as in '22 and '23 budgets, or what we're going to be proposing in our '23 budget. There was also an additional $300,000 that was levied, starting in 2021, to increase our fund balance. This was in response to a rating change that had come from Standard and Poor's as a part of our bond rating. They didn't change our bond rating, but they did change our outlook from stable to negative, and so, they had, we had, because of some drawdowns we had made in our fund balance in the general fund, and so, in '21, we were able to replenish that, and that was actually seen by Standard and Poor's as being very favorable as we were issuing debt in 2021. The total unassigned fund balance at $1.3 million in the general fund compares to 460, is increased by 460,000 compared to 2020, when it was at 863,000. So, that's a very good improvement, consistent with the efforts we tried to make with increasing fund balance and showing a healthier position in the fund at year-end. Our second major fund is our electric fund, that begins on page 42 of the report. Our net assets in this fund were at $6.6 million, this is an increase of 1.6 million. Our operating expenses were the $41.5 million. This is a little bit different than what I stated earlier at the entity-wide presentation, and that has to do with how various expenditures are accrued between our enterprise operations and our overall entity reporting. So, the operating expenditures totaled $41.5 million, and this fund continues to contribute to the electric fund to bring down property taxes in the general fund. That contribution in 2021 came to $4.3 million. After the general financial statements, in the section beginning on page 45, you'll begin to find the note disclosures, and this is the detailed note disclosures that we have to make on various positions on our balance sheet, outstanding debt, some of the operations and the, that we have from an economic development perspective regarding our TIF districts and our abatement efforts, and also, our pension disclosures for city pensions, as well as the note we have in there for the Chaska Fire Relief Association. They are a separate entity, but because the city is obligated to fund that pension benefit, there's various disclosures that we have to make as a part of these note disclosures to include the fire relief's pension positions as a part of the notes. After page 45, beginning on page 104, we're now into the non-major funds, and these are the funds, whether it be our special revenue, capital project, debt service fund, that didn't rise to that larger fund status, but we do report them in this report. And the opinion the auditor is going to discuss is for the overall financial statements, and they have performed their audit and, and looked at some of these individual funds as a part of that audit. The third section of this report is our statistical section. This is the final part of the report, and it looks at trend information with a lot of 10-year history. So, it has a 10-year trend on what have been our revenues, what have been our expenses, how has our debt changed, how has our debt coverage, our ability to repay our debt changed, what is our fund balance, and how has that fund balance changed on a year-by-year basis? And so, this is a section that if someone's trying to understand the overall trends of the city, such as a bond analyst who's reviewing our financial position, they're going to be looking not only at the statements, but also this trend to see what, are we, are we increasing our financial position, or are we drawing down against our assets? The, from 2021, there's a couple things I'd like to highlight in general. First of all, the, unlike the prior year, we did not have a federal single audit performed as a part of the audit this year. Whenever we have more than $750,000 in federal expenditures incurred, we then have to have a federal single audit done, that is done by MMKR. Prior, for 2020, we had COVID dollars that exceeded that threshold, so there was a single audit. We did not have that in '21, but we do anticipate we'll once again have a federal single audit in '22 and '23, potentially '24, as we continue to spend down the SLRF fundings that we've received, as well as some congressional designation funding that's coming to the city in the coming years. Our total cash balance on page 54, this is our note disclosure on our cash positions. I highlight this for you because it begins on page 54. On page 55 is a investment and cash table that you will see every quarter as a part of our investment report to you. This is the same table that we put in our annual financial report, and then, update every quarter to show you our cash positions, how it's invested, and the credit worthiness in which the positions are. So, I just wanted to highlight that so you understand what we're showing at year-end is the same thing you're seeing every quarter as a part of the investment reporting. Note number six, which begins on page 16, deals with our long-term liabilities. We did issue three different series of debt last year. We issued a bond, a refunding bond, that, a second refunding bond that saved just over $1.3 million in present value savings for the city, and then, we placed a bank loan in December of the year to fund the construction of the Learning Links project, and that allowed us to recognize that issuance and those bond proceeds to offset those project costs prior to the end of the fiscal year. As a part of our debt issuance process, we do have a rating that is issued to us by Standard and Poor's. As an entity issuing GO debt, our GO debt rating is double A, which is a very high rating for an entity our size and for the type of activity that we have. That, like I mentioned earlier, as we were issuing debt in 2020, our outlook with S&amp;P was changed from stable to negative. When we went to the market in 2021 and we reviewed with S&amp;P the changes we had made in our budgeting for '21 and '22, and the results, preliminary, preliminary results that we were seeing in '21, and that we were anticipating be able to reserve, put that $300,000 towards the fund balance, they saw that as a very positive trend, and so, they changed our outlook from negative back to stable. So, we are right now a double A with S&amp;P with a stable outlook. Now, our EDA is one of the other entities that's included in this financial report. They are a separate entity, but because the city council serves as the board of directors essentially for the Chaska EDA, they qualify as a reporting entity that we have to include in the financial report. So, there is a special revenue fund for the EDA fund. The EDA also issues debt, a lot of it has been lease revenue type debt to support city projects. Because it's lease revenue, it's one notch lower, so that debt is rated by S&amp;P as a double A minus. Again, a very strong rating, and that debt has always been very well-received in the market when we issue debt. For our GO, for our electric enterprise fund, we also have an electric revenue rating from Moody's of A2. So, this is a separate rating because this debt is supported by electric revenues. They issue the rating of A2. We, we've rated that with Moody's because they were a little more familiar with some of the electric revenue type market debt, so it was chosen to go with a Moody's rating. Because S&amp;P does their GO rating, they issue a market comparative rating on that same electric revenue debt, and their rating is an A on that. So, they both are a single A, there's just a difference, S&amp;P has is an A and Moody's has us as A2. That's a little bit of a difference, but the market is very receptive to that debt as well. So, we have multiple bond ratings out there based on our financial position, and as we maintain our financial positions and the ability to repay our debt, we're able to maintain those ratings. One thing I'd like to highlight is in note number seven on page 72, we do have some of our inter-fund activity. This is where we have some of our temporary financing between funds to cover our activities, this including our construction fund activity, until we receive permanent financing. So, we have about $13.6 million that is being shared between funds, and then, we also have about another $5.1 million that's on loan between funds on a long-term basis. I highlight these because these are part of that investment report that we share with you every quarter as well. The next set of reports that I wanted to highlight for you briefly is the Chaska Fire Relief Association. The, their annual financial report is also included. This is, has a PDF in your packet. This report this year was not prepared by city staff, but this was prepared by Abdo Financial Services. The fire relief board has been moving towards working with Abdo Financial Services to maintain a lot of their financial records, a lot of their historical records, and they've been improving the overall trial balance and the process for maintaining the records for the fire relief. And so, as a part of that effort, we've transitioned to having them draft the actual financial report. This is the financial report of the fire relief, and that was also audited by MMKR as a part of their audit when they came out to audit for the city. They also issued then the special purpose compliance reports, as well as the management letter. So, with that, I'm going to let Jackie present the auditor's findings at this point, and then, I will come back and highlight a couple other things before moving to adopt reports.
Thanks, Noel.
Well, thank you for having me tonight to present the audit results for the year ended December 31st, 2021. And we did have the opportunity tonight to discuss the audit in more detail at the work session, so the council meeting presentation will be a more summarized review of the audit for the year ended '21. As Noel previously mentioned, you have received the documents in your council packets. The largest of the documents is that annual comprehensive financial report, which is the city-prepared document of the financial statements. As auditors, we issue an opinion on that financial statement. There is also the special purpose report, which is our MMKR audit opinions on the internal controls over the city, as well as the audit opinions on Minnesota legal compliance state statutes. And then, the last document is the MMKR management report, so that is an MMKR document that summarizes the audit results. As an auditor, our role is to issue an opinion on the basic financial statements, noting that those financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with accounting principles. As part of our audit, we also test the internal controls and the compliance over that financial statement audit, and then, we also test compliance with Minnesota state laws and regulations. So, each year, the Office of the State Auditor releases a legal compliance manual with specific state statutes that, as auditors, we're required to test as part of the audit. For the audit results, overall, it was a very good audit, very clean audit, as you'll see on this slide. We issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on that basic financial statements, noting that it is fairly stated in accordance with accounting principles. We had no findings to report over the internal controls over financial reporting, and no findings to report with the compliance over financial reporting, and no findings to report over that Minnesota legal compliance audit. Moving on to some of the financial results for the year ended '21, this first slide summarizes the governmental funds change and fund balance of the city. So, it presents all the governmental funds of the city together for 2021 compared to 2020. The top part of this table shows that by that fund balance classification, the non-spendable dollars, the restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned, and then, the bottom portion of that table shows that by the major funds of the city, with all the non-major funds combined, based on fund type, the special revenue, the debt service, and the capital project funds. So, overall, the total governmental fund balances for the year ended '21 was about $21.5 million. That was a decrease of just over $4 million from the prior year. If you're looking at the top part of that table, majority of that is in the unassigned fund balance, as well as the committed fund balance. And if you look at the bottom part, a lot of that relates with the public improvement project fund and the non-major capital project funds. Those decreases are due to various capital outlay and other project costs that the city incurred in 2021, but we're, but we'll be receiving future funding sources in a subsequent year for those costs. This slide summarizes the general fund financial position for the past five years. It shows the fund balance of the city, as well as the cash balance and the revenue for each of the last five years. Overall, the general fund cash and investment balance is about $4 million. That was an increase of about $1.6 million from the prior year. The total fund, the total general fund fund balance was about $3 million. That fund saw an increase of about $1.1 million from the prior year, and that was compared to a balanced budget approved by the city council. At year-end 2021, that fund balance, the total fund balance in the general fund represents about 15.5% of the general fund expenditures, and that's compared to about 10.4% in the prior year. This slide is a graph of the general fund revenues, showing the budget to actual by the various revenue categories. The total general fund revenues were just under $17 million for the year, about a million over the final budget. A couple of the budget to actual variances that make up that million, you're seeing your license and permits about $740,000 over budget, due to more than anticipated building activity in the current year. And the intergovernmental revenues are about $230,000 over budget, due to additional FEMA grants received in 2021. And the intergovernmental revenues are about 230,000 over budget due to additional FEMA grants received in 2021. The total general fund revenues are about 2.4 million more than the prior year. A lot of that is once again due to that increased building activity that the city saw, as well as some increase in admin fee charges. And then the tax revenues, you also saw an increase of about 700,000 from the prior year. So similar graph just of the general fund expenditures showing budget to actual by function. Total general fund expenditures are about 19.6 million, about 23,000 higher than the final budget. So the total expenditures were within 1/10th of 1% of the total budget of the city. You are seeing some swings, even though in total it's within 23,000. The general government was about 500,000 under budget due to lower than anticipated salaries and benefits, mainly in the communications and the information technology departments. You're seeing the public safety function about 250,000 over budget due to increased fire department staffing, as well as the building inspections. Wages were more than anticipated as a result of that increased building activity in the current year. And you're seeing the public works about 193,000 over budget, mainly in the salaries and benefits for street and park maintenance. Overall, looking at general fund expenditures, they were about 1.1 million more than the prior year. A few of the areas you're seeing those increases, our public works increased just under 400,000. That was mainly in the park maintenance expenditures and also due to higher snow removal costs in the current year. When you're looking at the public safety function, you're seeing an increase there of about 275,000 in the expenditures, mainly due to increased police wages and benefits, as well as an increase in the building inspection wages and benefits. And then lastly, you're seeing your general government expenditures increase about 225,000, and that is mainly in the building maintenance expenditure area. And then the last slide I have here summarizes those enterprise funds change in net position. So these are the business type activities of the city, showing the 2021 net position compared to 2020. If you look at the top part of the table here, it shows that by that classification of net position, compared to the bottom part of that table, shows that by the major enterprise funds with all the non-major enterprise funds combined. So overall, the total net position of the enterprise funds for the end of the year was about 52.6 million. That was an increase of about 9.5 million from the prior year. If you look at the top part of that table, you're seeing the net investment in capital assets increase about 3 million. A lot of that is due to capital infrastructure contributions that these enterprise funds received from the governmental activities as well as from outside developers. And then you're seeing your unrestricted net position go up about 6.6 million. And that is just due to the positive operating results of those enterprise funds, which you can see listed in the bottom part of the table. So with that, I can open it up for any questions?
You got any questions for Jackie? Again, I just want to let everyone know that we, we have seen this and gone through this at a work session prior. So this is kind of a quick summary, and we had a lot of questions got answered there. So don't think that we're looking at this lightly, and we want to make sure that we are in a good position. And so far, everything, all of our results are good at this point, so. Not seeing any questions, so.
All right, with that, I'll turn it back over to Noel then.
All right.
So a couple of things I just wanted to touch base on real quick here. I did mention the GFoa Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. This is something the city has participated in for a number of years and has received the reward, the award each year. One of the benefits of this program is by preparing a comprehensive financial report, we are, we're addressing the program requirements that are required for a basic financial statement, but also making sure that we're implementing the GASB requirements that have certain disclosure requirements. We also include the MDNA section of the report, which is not a requirement, but something that provides more clarity and information to the public about our financial operations, as well as the statistical section with the 10-year trend information. So by participating in this program, we're actually trying to raise the overall reporting standard and being more open to the public about our financial positions and operations. The program allows us to submit a report, and it's then reviewed by two other reviewers in other states, as well as one in-house reviewer at GFoa. So we get feedback from three different reviewers on the quality of our financial report, and we get comments that we can then incorporate into the following year's report. This is also a standard by which rating agencies and institutional buyers of our bonds refer to. There are over 52,000 entities in the United States and Canada that are eligible for this award, and less than 8% of the entities or 4,300 actually receive the certificate each year. So that puts us in the top 8%. In the state of Minnesota, there's 2,600, 2,600 eligible entities. Only 138 of the cities eligible for this received the award last year. So that puts us in the top 5% of the state. So this is actually a complete report that when a bond analyst is reviewing and they see the certificate as a part of this report, they know the report has been through this external review and has met the higher standard for financial reporting. So the city has received this for 32 consecutive years since 1989, and we will be submitting this report again to be reviewed as a part of our process for submitting the 2021 financial report. This report is rather detailed. It is available on the city's website. We did publish a summary of it in accordance with state statute requirements. That was published last Thursday on July 8th. And we also participate in the GFoa program, which also means there's a link to our financial report on the GFoa website available to users there. We do provide a copy of this to the Chaska Library, and it's also available here at Chaska City Hall if anybody wants to review the report. I would like to acknowledge people who have worked on this. On page seven of the Letter of Transmittal, we do call these people out, but I wanted to recognize Kelde Grinnell, who was our finance manager. She worked to complete the audit and the report. Sadly, she moved on to a new opportunity. She left the city on Ju, July, excuse me, June 28th, so just about two weeks ago, and for a new opportunity that will be very beneficial for her. So we were very appreciative of her efforts to lead the audit and to complete the report and its submission before she left. She worked very closely with Lisa Nelson, who is our controller, who has worked on this report for a number of years, and helps maintain not only our internal ERP system with our financial records, but works very closely with the auditors to facilitate their access to that system, which has been done primarily on a remote basis since COVID. And that has actually generated a lot of efficiencies for both our internal staff as well as the audit staff who can work remotely through the audit process. We also, I want to recognize Erin Barnum and Matt Burt, who are in our finance department, who played significant roles in completing the financial report, as well as all of the finance staff who participate in the day-to-day transactions that we have to record and maintain on an ongoing basis. And we couldn't do any of this in finance without the help of our department heads and city staff who we interact with and who submit invoices and revenues or payments that they receive to us to track. So our thanks go to all of the department heads and city staff who work with finance, as well as Matt, our city administrator and consul and mayor for your help as we go through our budget and financial process each year. So with that, if there's any other questions you would like to ask, I'd be happy to entertain those questions. And if not, then I would ask that you move to accept these reports from the city, and the fire relief has a motion.
Questions for Noel? I just want to say thanks for all your work. I know it's a lot of work to get this all processed. It seems like we get it done, and you got to turn around and start all over again, start, start working on it again. But I, you know, I think it helps that we've got a pretty good system going. And obviously, the, would you say 32 years we've been getting that certificate of achievement?
32 years since 1989.
So that's, that's pretty awesome work by you and your staff, so thank you. Pat, please pass that on to the council, thanking for all their efforts.
We will do that. Thank you.
Anyone else for Noel? Right, with that, I guess I would need a motion to accept the 2021 annual financial reports. Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gra. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. That concludes our action item to move on to bills. Again, if anyone's got any questions on bills, please bring it forward. If not, I would entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gra.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to pay the bills. Discussion. Thank you, Jackie. So with that, Lisa, we call it over, please.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gra?
Aye.
Mayor Winchell?
Aye. All right, drawn a blank there, sorry. All right, we are moving on to other business. How about Councilmember Gra?
You know, I don't have a whole lot other than wishing individuals. It's a fun time of the year, summer is, I think, you know, the dog days of summer, but that also gets people out there and community events with the fireworks and Fire and Ice coming up. And, you know, right around the corner, the end of the month, we'll have River City Days. Just a lot of fun stuff going on, so I appreciate that. It's good to see people out. The other thing that I'll just mention that I think is a good reminder for us all, and I've seen some commentary and I've heard some people talk about it on some social media stuff and just, just in general, is just understanding that a lot of the local businesses are, it's still a very tough job market in finding people. So having patience for the people who are working there, because let's just be glad they're there so they can be open. But I think there's some understanding too, if things do unexpectedly close or staffing. I think there's, you know, we've, for a long time, truthfully, I'm guilty here, you just kind of take it for granted. You go somewhere, it's going to be open. So just practicing kind of some patience and understanding, I think, is a good reminder. I've, you know, there's something, you know, local businesses have had to be closed for lack of staffing and finding people. And that's, they would rather be open if they really could. So I just kind of mentioned that because I think that's popped up a little bit here in the last couple of weeks with things. And it's still a very dynamic job market out there as well, so I'll mention that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hubbard?
I really don't have anything to report other than I look forward to the Fire and Ice Festival this upcoming 15th and 16th of July. So, Friday and Saturday. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Hatfield?
Yep, Fire and Ice, excited for that along with everybody else. Next week, I know we'll have a council meeting, but just to put it on your calendars, food distribution on Thursday, the 21st, and then in the evening is picnic with police, starts at 5:30. And I think it's Veterans Park.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yep.
And then Farmer's Market on Wednesdays. Love that those are back. They seem to be pretty well attended too, so that was nice to see. And then it is my mom's birthday, so happy birthday, Mom.
Oh, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Mom.
Yeah, they went to eat without me.
Oh.
That's fine.
Hopefully they brought you something back.
No, she did make me sandwiches before I came here.
Well, happy birthday, Mom.
That's all I have.
Just to touch on your comments real quick, the Tuesday night is his kids' entertainment series at Fireman's Park. Wednesday night is Fireman's Park and City Square concerts. And then obviously the Friday night band concerts, why you're talking about different events that are happening throughout, so. All right, thank you for that. Alisa?
No, I haven't.
Nothing?
No.
Jake? Hunter's busy. You're good. All right, just a few things. This is a pretty cool thing. Jim Snuggerood and Sam Rinzell from Chaska High School, both were drafted in the first round of the hockey, made National League Hockey. Snuggerood to the St. Louis Blues and Sam Rinzell to Chicago Blackhawks. That's pretty amazing to have two kids come on a chat, and they played it, and they played together. Snuggerood left early and went to a developmental league, so. But they're still going to both play, I believe they're both playing for the Gophers, so they'll do their hockey tour.
I think Snuggerood is, I think the other individual's doing a USA.
I thought they said something about he might be at the U2, they might be playing. I don't, I don't know, it was kind of, the thing that I saw was kind of open. But anyways, I, I just think that that's pretty cool to have two, two guys drafted in NHL from Chaska High School. So congratulations to both of them. Also, congratulations to Abigail Moldenhauer. She is the first female Eagle Scout in Minnesota, I believe it said. Where only 8% of the Scouts become Eagle Scouts. So that's quite an honor. She built raised gardens over at Tallheim for the residents, so they don't have to bend over. So that's a pretty cool project, and congratulations to her. That's a, that's a big honor in itself, so. Also, our history center has, I believe it was called the Second Street Businesses. Is their exhibit that'll run till January 1st. But it's a lot of pretty interesting things, especially if you got a little, like a little history about Chaska. So please stop over there. Their big splash would be during River City Days, but they're open, I think, Thursday and Fridays, or Thursdays for sure. It might be Tuesdays and Fridays. Tuesdays and Fridays, Thursdays and Fridays? Okay, but anyways, that's a neat exhibit to stop by and see as well. And while we're in congratulations, Dan Keport was named to the George C. Klein Service Above Self Award. So at the Rotary Meeting less than 10 days ago. So a pretty big honor for Dan, and I think it's well deserved. If you don't know Dan, he's a local business owner of Dolce Vita right here. But Dan has been on almost every task force that we've had for community events. He was, he turned out on the Planning Commission for nine years. So he's been very, very active, and he's now currently the Downtown Business Council President. So very, very active and still very active. So congratulations to Dan. I think that that's, that's a, that's a big honor to get that. They've changed the format, so it kind of doesn't get out like it did in the past. But I do want to recognize Dan for his accomplishments on that, so. Also, MINDOT approved our Highway 41 plans. So that will allow us to put bids out, and hopefully they're going to be in by the end of the month. And we can move forward on that project and go over all that and get ready for next year's interesting year. It's going to be. We'll just leave it at that. It'll be an interesting year. One thing I want people, and I know we got another council meeting, not to forget about is Night to Unite, which is August, the first Tuesday.
Second.
Second?
Yeah.
Second. Get, get working on that. Get a block party, get your neighbors together. Register it, and hopefully city police or fire can try to stop by or someone stop by your party, so. But it's a great thing, it's back again, it's good to have it, people being able to get together and kind of get to know your neighbors. And a lot of good things come out of that, so get ready for that. Council meeting because of the holiday, we're going to be right back here next Monday. And then we go back to, in August, we go back to our regular schedule, but our first meeting is right away on the first. So the first and 15th is our meeting schedule for, for August. Then a couple of last just events, obviously the Fire and Ice has been talked about will be, that's always a lot of fun. Park in the Park, July 27th at Fireman's Park. Touch Truck is right around the corner, August 18th. I know we got some time on that one. And then this looks like a new one to me, Art and Park, August 28th, and that's at Fireman's Park. I'm not really sure, does anybody know much about that one?
Maybe it's through the consortium.
Is it?
Maybe that would be my.
Well, more to come on that one, but that's just another date to hold, hold open, so. Lots of fun activities happening throughout, so. Summertime, busy, get it all in while we can, it won't be long. That white stuff will be flying.
Don't say it.
All right, last call, not entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hatfield. Second by who?
No, Hubbard motioned it.
Oh, I didn't.
It doesn't.
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't.
We said it at the same time, so I took the second.
Okay, that's why. That's why you said that, I was confused. All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Hatfield to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, and we'll see you next Monday.